Well, I think we're live at this point, so good evening. We'd like to welcome you to the Zoom Candidates Forum for the Center School District, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Platte Counties, and the South Kansas City Alliance. I'm Sandy Eads, and I live in Kansas City, and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters. For the forum tonight, Elizabeth Darr will act as moderator with Rachel Thompson managing the Zoom desk, acting as timer, and monitoring our Facebook feed. This year, 2021, the League begins its second century empowering voters and defending democracy. The League of Women Voters is organized at local, state, and national levels, and our membership is open to all people of voting age, including men since 1974. There are over 700 member leagues representing 500,000 members and active supporters, serving millions of voters in every election cycle. We're a nonpartisan organization, and we do not endorse candidates. However, the League has always been issue-oriented and advocates at all levels of government for all positions on these issues. We do this only after careful study with consensus of our members. The League is well-known for voter services activities, taking part in voter registration, as well as candidate debates and forums while bringing focus to the issues. Our popular site, vote411.org, will give you information about your particular ballot and the candidates' ballot issues and more. The site is live right now, so give it a try. We'll sure you'll find it interesting. In addition to this Zoom event, we are also live streaming on Facebook. Thank you for joining us, and thanks to the candidates for being responsive to voters. Tonight, we have a chance to hear from four candidates for the Center School District Director, and there are two positions open for a three-year term. We have Bryce T. Shields, Rebecca Leon, Julie Cramshuster, and Kathleen Katie Rommel. Candidates will have 90 seconds to answer each question. We'll make two-minute closing statements. We'd like to get to as many questions as we can before closing. The starting order of candidate responses has been randomly selected, with each question having a different order for candidates' answers. Elizabeth?
Thank you, Sandy. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, candidates. Let's get right to our questions, and we'll start with Katie. What qualifies you for a position on the school board?
Well, I've been involved in Center School District for a very long time. My family moved here in the 90s, and I attended Center Schools. And from there, I became a paramedic serving the community. And I decided I wanted to serve in a different way. I got my bachelor's in education, and then I became a teacher at Center Middle School. So I taught there for 12 years, and the beginning of my tenure there was beautiful. We were closing the achievement gap at four times the national rate. I saw some amazing things happening at Center. Very proud to be a part of that. I follow policy, very analytical, and I really like looking at long-term unintended consequences. I have a science background, so I kind of look at things in a long-term perspective.
Thank you. Bryce?
Thank you. So hello, everyone. My name is Bryce Shields. My wife and I moved into the district in 2016, and we were very excited to do that. Although I'm not a Center alumnus, my history with the district runs deep. My mom and aunts and uncles are alumni of the Center School District. I'm very proud of that fact. During work with the K C A T A, I work, K C A T A, which you might better know as Right KC, I work in the Community and Government Affairs Department. And through that, I interact a lot with Kansas City as a whole, and especially because I live in South Kansas City, I interact with the South Kansas City community. Through that experience, I built networks and teams and the ability to communicate with people and understand their needs. Some skills I have from both just personally growing up, my degrees are the ability to think analytically and think outside the box. I also like to think in long-term pictures. I like to not focus on the immediate satisfaction, but rather focus on the long-term goals and be able to put off immediate success for a longer-term, better success. So with that, I'm running because I believe my skills, my background are a unique position that I can bring to the board, and that's why I'm wanting to serve. All I'm wanting to do is just help the district, and that's why I'm running, and those are the skills I think I can bring. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca?
All right. Well, thank you for hosting tonight. My name is Rebecca Lohan. So what qualifies me for a position on the board? Well, I am a mom of three Center High School students who, when it is all said and done, will be Center K through 12, including one who is graduating in May. I have 19-plus years of experience in human resources, and so in the public sector, so understand how other governing agencies impact the work that we do. Many of the issues that the board deals with do touch on human resources. You know, 75% of what we do involves staff. I am a current board member, and so we have gone through several changes over the last three years, and so can bring some historical knowledge. We are a relatively young board in terms of number of terms on the board. We have only one member who has more than one term. Both my work in HR and my time on the board does require a strategic focus, but also practical implementation, and so do bring that skill set to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Julie?
Yes, my name is Julie Cramshuster. I have been a mom in the Center District for several years since 2012, and my daughter Jillian graduated from high school in 2019. I came to Center as a teacher, also at the high school. I taught upper-level math and science. I was head coach for our math competition team that was very successful. I served as math department chair, working with administration and, you know, other teachers in the school as a teacher leader. I've been an educational advocate for many years, both as teacher leader, as someone who works in curricular, you know, reform. I served as one of the head writers of the math standards for grades 6 through 12 math for the current Missouri learning standards. And that also goes into the assessment, so it's a little bit, you know, beyond the classroom. I'm now retired, so I have the opportunity to share my expertise. I have deep connections in our community, and many people within that community have supported me and encouraged me to run for this office, and I think that I would bring a good perspective to our district.
Thank you. As a member of the school board, what would be your top two to three priorities? And this time, we'll start with Bryce.
Great, so I actually have three priorities. The first one is working towards universal pre-K for all of our kids. I think the studies show that the progress you see in children who receive quality pre-K extends way past kindergarten up into grades of fifth and sixth and even middle school. And so I think it's incredibly important. You know, my nephew, my nephew, whose parents have worked with greatly, and he's watching and learn has been fantastic, but not every kid has the opportunity he has. And I think as a district, even though it's expensive, I think it's worth providing that make sure all of our kids have that option. I'm also really big on post-secondary preparedness programs. You know, I think Center does a great job with that, but I think there's more we can do. And post-secondary doesn't just mean for your university. That can also mean a community college, a technical school, a trade skill. Basically, I want our seniors graduating with a plan and knowing they have options in their career. And last, I want to make sure we are paying our teachers competitive salaries. They can not only just work in the district, also live in the district as well, which I think brings really great value to a community. And that also includes, you know, hiring new teachers with competitive salaries, but supporting our current teachers, making sure they're receiving the planning time they're needing, making sure they're needing the emotional support they're needing, making sure they're receiving the supplies they're needing to properly educate our kids. So those are my three main priorities if I were to be elected to the board. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Julie?
Yeah, so my priorities are, I guess, in the most immediate sense. First, we need to increase our counseling staff, and that really is in part because of the school closures and, you know, the long-time absence of in-person schooling, you know, along with other, the social and emotional issues around the pandemic. We need to increase the counseling staff. We need to increase time available for that staff to work directly with students. And I really, I don't think I was necessarily expecting that, but I've come to realize that many students, including those that are, you know, that appear to be handling school relatively well, are very stressed right now. I want to preserve and/or restore upper-level academics in all areas, the honors dual-credit AP classes, et cetera. I want to continue the equity training that is just being started, and will hopefully continue with the next school year's professional development. I want to expand the early childhood. The district has plenty of space right now to do that, but has chosen not to expand that. I want to reduce instructional time spent and repeated testing, respect teacher professionalism, including planned time, and make buildings and policies more welcoming for families and students.
Thank you. Katie?
All right. My priorities kind of fall under an umbrella, and the umbrella is improving relationships in general, because what worked so well for Center was we really had this family feel. Communication was really good between administration, teachers, students, and families. We had very close relationships, and I feel like a lot of those relationships have broken down over the last five years. So to do that, specifically academics, it's a real struggle right now. We now have three targeted schools for underperformance, whereas before, we were a district of distinction. Teacher retention is a really large issue right now in the district, and finances. So with academics, my first priority is decreasing class sizes. When I started teaching in 2008, I had maybe 15 to 17 students in a class. We were competing with private schools as far as the numbers of children in a class, and that allowed us to have these really deep, close relationships with our students, really got to know what made them tick, and then, I'm sorry, I want to make sure I can see the timer. There it is. To make sure that we could alter curriculum to help that student. Teacher retention is a large issue. We are hemorrhaging teachers at the high school, well, the secondary, middle school and high school. We need to look at our working conditions, our building culture, and we really need to improve those relationships. And last, finances. We'll get to it later.
Thanks, Katie. Rebecca?
Okay, well, it would be an understatement to say that the last year has been a challenge. And so if this question had been asked of me last year, my answers would probably be very different. But the pandemic really has highlighted and exasperated some issues. So one of my top priority is, you know, addressing the achievement gap that's been exasperated during this time. You know, many of our students did struggle during this time. I will say that the district has started to put some things in place that I think will be helpful, but obviously, implementation is going to be much more robust and much easier when we can start getting our students back face-to-face. Having said that, we have had some success with some of our virtual learners, and so looking at, you know, how we can take, you know, what worked well for those learners and what situations and be able to look at how we can, you know, maybe tailor so that our students can get the best possible experience they can. Building a community again, we've all missed each other so much this year, and so finding those opportunities to bring everyone together, teachers, staff, students, families, communities, it will also be a huge priority. Thank you.
So our next question is, how can the district attract and retain quality teachers? And in our random order, we're going to go back to Rebecca.
Okay. Well, yeah, retention and attracting teachers is definitely something that I think is on all of our radar. You know, one of the challenges that we do have in this area is there are so many competing school districts, and so attracting teachers away from districts that may be able to pay more. So looking again at our salary structure, I think figuring out ways that we can really develop a kind of a grow-your-own model. I know that we have talked about it in the past, but, you know, identifying our own students who, you know, have the potential to be, you know, excellent teachers. We've had several who have graduated from Center and come back, and we always love that when that happens. And so looking at those types of models, I think, would be helpful. Again, looking at building our culture, we've gone through a lot of changes in the last three, three to five years, and so that really does make it difficult to really build a culture. We've got a new superintendent now, you know, who is starting to put some things in place that I think will be really helpful as we, as we address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie?
It's such an interesting question to me, because my experience in Center was teachers did not leave. I was talking with Amy Carr, and when she was hired for an art position, there had been no elementary art positions open in 12 years. And then in the last four years, I think the entire art department has turned over in elementary. So it's a little mind-boggling to even discuss it, but when I started teaching in Center, we were extremely competitive on the salary structure. In fact, I think we were one of, if not the highest-paying district in the Kansas City area. Other districts moved to, again, that clock. Other districts moved and adjusted their salary schedules to compete with us. Our staff, wow, they were amazing. Tenured teachers with years of experience, experts in learning strategies. It was a beautiful community to step into as a young teacher starting out. I think a large part of it is really work culture, that treating teachers as the professionals that they are. A top-down model, you know, you're going to do this, you're going to do this, you're going to do this, this is how you're going to do it. From a teacher's perspective, if you know your students and you know your profession, it's a little insulting, the top-down model. It's about work culture. Thanks.
Thank you. Julie?
Yes, you know, I would echo a lot of what Katie has just said. You know, since I have experience in other districts and also in the Center District, you know, it's really an interesting comparison. Center did pay well, but that was not the only draw. When you came into Center, it was an amazing place. The administrators that we had at that time understood very well the number-one cardinal rule of being an administrator, which is that your role is to support your teachers. You know, when they come with requests, you try to find out what they really need and why, and if that makes sense in your place. And our administrators did that. The result of that, you know, really respect of professionalism was that everyone did extras. Everyone worked really hard. I started the math competition team for no extra pay. For several years, I did it for no extra pay, and things like that. And there were a lot of other things that I did, and I didn't have to do those things. And everyone was doing that. And so that, I think we've really lost a lot of that. There are still some good people, but that respect for teacher professionalism and attitude of administration is going to be crucial.
Thank you, Bryce.
So I'm going to echo what I think everybody has said now, is I want to make sure our teachers are being paid competitively, so not only can work in the district, but also live in the district, raise their families in the district, not have a 30-minute commute to get into the district because they're living somewhere else. I think all that's important for helping retain teachers, hiring teachers and retaining teachers for long-term. You know, it's also supporting our teachers with making sure they have quality planning time, making sure their class sizes are manageable, and also making sure for those teachers who are wanting to go into administration that they have the option to do that internally, making sure we're hiring internally when possible, not always. You have to decide it's good to get fresh blood in sometimes, but, you know, make sure that that is seen as a career path option for our teachers if that is what they're wanting. So again, make sure we're paying competitively, make sure they are receiving the support they need, both planning time, emotional support, physical supplies. They aren't constantly, you know, asking their friends and family for supplies, and then, you know, making sure that they see a viable long-term career options within Center. Those are my ideas for how to be attractive and maintain quality teachers.
Thank you. So our next question is, how should the district help students regain academic accomplishments which have been lost during the COVID-19 isolation? And we'll start this time with Julie.
Yeah, that is, that's going to be a good question. I know that for some students, you know, the academic part has gone okay. I also know that, you know, if we're all in the same situation, you know, then nobody's really lost. So I think we start out, as you would with, you know, any good lesson, you want to know where your people are. So teachers need time to get to know the students when they come back, to see how they are. We all need to learn how to be together again, you know, when, since at Center, we've had, you know, primarily not in-person learnings, and then even as we come back to that for those that are not in-person, when they come back, learning how to be together, how to function. You know, I guess I still tend to think a lot about adolescence, and I know that for adolescents, you know, the social piece is often really frustrating. And so when they've been at home for a long time, then coming back out, there's a lot, you know, going on in their heads. I think teachers will be up to the task. I think that it's all about building those relationships, and so given time and support, this will all come back.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Yeah, I would actually echo a lot of what Julie said. You know, it has been, it has been rough. I've probably had the easiest of a bad situation with three high school students who are very tech-savvy. And so I think, you know, as we start to bring them back, you know, having those, having that time for them to build relationships face-to-face again, you know, having those social and emotional supports. You know, our teachers really during this time have just worked wonders and have pivoted so many times along the way to ensure our students are engaged and are learning. And so I know that that will only be enhanced when they actually do get to come into the classroom again, and I'm hopeful that we're going to have a much more normal year. I think, you know, some of the things that we've done so far that I think will be helpful is we have invested in some new curriculum, which I know is not the be-all, end-all, but it is, it is a step to getting us towards the new state standards that are coming. There's a trauma-smart training program that will help with addressing some of the social and emotional issues. And then I think it's working with teachers and asking them what else they need in order to be able to support our students. And so having those conversations and know that we're going to be adjusting, but yeah, we're all kind of in the same boat right now. So, thank you.
Thanks. Bryce?
You know, I think it's going to be hard. We're not going to be able to flip a switch in the fall and say, okay, last year sucked, let's move on and do everything like we did. You know, each, different grades have been more successful at remote learning than others, and even within those grades, every kid's have been better. We've been retaining information and learning more. I think it's going to take some kind of individual assessment on the children, and that's not fun, and that's going to take a lot of work, but I think we should talk about individual learning plans for our kids, at least for the first semester, to see where they're at and see what we need to do to catch them up to where they're going to be. Again, that's not easy, that's probably not cheap, but I think, I don't think we can just ignore what this year has done. And I know a lot of we've talked about the emotional stress, which there has been a lot of emotional stress, which is also important that we assess, but I don't want a kid to fall behind because they didn't happen to have as high-quality internet access at their home or the right kind of computer. And so I think it's important that we give each kid the individual attention as much as possible and then figure out where they need to be. Hopefully, by the spring of 2022, we can start getting back to what a more traditional school year looks like.
Thanks. Katie?
There has definitely been some lost learning opportunities with the pandemic, and it's very disproportionate when you look at the data. Some students do have better access, some do not. It is a small percentage that are thriving in an online environment. The vast majority is not. There are lessons to be learned from that. As far as improving it or making up losses, really, you're making up losses like you would any other year, you know, any other, any other learning gap. When you talk about closing the learning gap, it's the same thing. It's very small class sizes, really close relationships with teachers, and building a classroom community. And that can be done with socio-emotional curriculum, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a purchased program. You can look at what's working for a program and implement your own version at a much less fiscal cost. Trauma Smart is a wonderful program, but it's also very pricey. And there's a lot of consultation involved, too, so there's ongoing costs with it. The district is moving in the direction of individualized plans. They call it RTI, and they have time set up for those interventions. But you don't necessarily need a standardized test to assess learning loss. That's something in the purview of a teacher. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. One of our questioners asked a simple but very important question. How do you prefer to be contacted by members of the public? Email, phone call, text, something else? And we'll go to Rebecca.
All right, and I probably won't take the whole time on this one. You know, I actually, for most issues, I would prefer that they call me. I think it just, it saves some time, and it allows for the opportunity to really have a conversation about what the issue is. And my phone number is out on the website, so folks can certainly call me. I will, you know, they can always email me, but if it's something that's really important to them, I would prefer that they go ahead and just give me a call.
Thanks. Bryce?
Yeah, phone, email, text, I'm really not picky. I like email sometimes because that way it gets better documentation, I can get a more detailed response. But, you know, I'm fine getting a phone call or texting, because it kind of goes into a little bit, something I want to do if I'm elected, and that's what I've talked about a little bit last year, is office hours. And then it's every other week at a predetermined time, decided, yes, I'm going to be at Crow's Coffee, and I want anybody from the community to come and talk to me for about two hours. That can be people in the community, teachers, parents, students who have permission from their parents. Feel free to come speak, and then I'll talk about, you know, what we're talking about on the board, how I voted, why I voted, how I voted. You may not like my answer, but you're going to know why I did what I did, and I think that's important. So during the campaign, feel free to call, text, email me. I don't think my phone number is actually on my Facebook, but I can add that. And if I'm elected, again, the same, and please come down to my office hours where we can talk in some more detail about things that matter for Center.
Thank you. Katie?
I'm really at an advantage here. I have two very young boys, and I'm a homemaker, so I have lots of time on my hands now during the day. I'm a communicator. I love to chat, and I'm really open to all forms of communication throughout this campaign process. It's been so much fun, you know, Facebook messages, Instagram messages, emails, and phone calls, all of them. I've had really great connections through all of them, although I usually find, if I'm messaging with someone quite a bit, I usually end up sending them my phone number, and we do end up chatting, because there's nothing more personal than a phone call, and then you can hear tone and inflection. So I guess in the end, I'd probably prefer the phone. Thank you.
Okay. Julie?
You know, I also am available by, you know, sometimes people like to do email because, you know, the timing is convenient. But I am happy to get a text message or a phone call, you know, pretty much anytime except maybe between, you know, 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM or something like that. And, you know, I I I want to say this, you know, Bryce's idea of having the office hours, and I or I think that's what he called it, office hours, you know, certain times or places, you know, that he would just make himself available and, you know, and and I think that's a nice idea. I do think, you know, in in the first, you know, five years or so, five, six years after I came into the center school district, you know, that's how it was. We all talked to, you know, anyone would talk to anyone about anything, and it it was a system that worked really well. I happen to be a teacher that had almost every single board member's children in my class, so that's no longer true. I think there's a couple that I haven't now, but it wasn't one knew everyone else. We all have each other's phone numbers in our phones and you know, I truly believe in in democracy and open governance. We are a public school, we belong to the public, and that's important to me.
Okay, thanks Julie. And you froze up just for a couple of words there, but I think that your meaning came through clearly. Our next question is, every person in public office will be approached by members of the public, or in this case, a teacher, or perhaps a special interest groups. How do you plan to handle special requests from those constituents? And we're going to go back to Julie.
So I don't know exactly what, how to interpret special request. I I certainly am open to talking to anyone about any topic. And and I always have been, that is, you know, absolutely a hallmark of my personality. I do think that when people come to board members, typically the reasons for that are that they've already tried to, you know, figure it out on their own. And so sometimes, you know, people need to be listened to to help them process, you know, what you would do. I know this is not exactly what you asked. I do think it's inappropriate for board members to, you know, head out to to discuss things with teachers or administrators directly, other than the superintendent, obviously, but I I think, you know, that there are sometimes when people come to you, you don't first understand what their issue is. And so I think it's important to really listen. And I I believe, and I truly believe this, after, you know, sixty-something years of living, people really just need to be heard, and people that have been heard are almost always, you know, willing to be constructive parts of solutions. And I just don't believe that there's going to be problems with anything like that.
Thank you. Katie?
All right. I I just want to make sure I'm clear in the question. How would you handle special interest groups specifically?
Special interest groups, somebody from the public or a teacher. The implication, I think, in the question is, somebody takes you aside and says something or other. I'm not going to put words in their mouth.
It's extremely important. I agree with Julie. It's extremely important to be open. No one person can know it all. No one person can understand another person's life experience. So you have to be able to listen with an open mind. As far as special interest groups, I'm not sure what agenda they would would have or want with a public school, but I I think I'd be open to listen as well. But in the end, it really comes down to what is best for the students. And I I think that should be the rule across the board, what is really best for the students, because the students, well, they're a community, they're a future, you know, their outcome really determines, you know, our crime rate. You know, their income potential, they're, really, our students are the community. So you have to be able to listen to the entire community. Thank you.
Thanks. Bryce?
So I too am a little confused at the special request concept. With that said, I, you know, as we mentioned, I want to be open to the public. I want to be able to talk to people, be able to talk to me if they want to. If in regards to in regards to, if it's like special requested at school or like a parent, you know, I don't want to violate the chain of command. I don't want to, you know, go straight to the superintendent necessarily, unless I feel like I absolutely have to, because I don't, I don't think any teacher wants superintendent suddenly coming down because a parent complained to a board member that it's not fair to the teacher. So, you know, as much as possible, I'd love to respect the chain of command, which generally is teacher, if parent is an issue, they talk to the teacher, if they aren't happy with the teacher, they talk to the principal. If they aren't happy with that answer, then they go to the superintendent, and then it goes to the board for a board presentation if we saw there. And and I would like to try and respect that as much as possible, because then I don't want to create a situation where I'm creating undue stress on a teacher for a situation that I don't understand possibly of what's going on. And so I'm very open dialogue and I will talk to anybody, I will listen to what anybody has to say. But I also want to respect the boundaries of the school board, which our authority only exists in the boardroom. And we have essentially one employee, which is the superintendent. So I want to respect that as representative of the community that we maintain our professionalism.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Okay, so, you know, again, I think, you know, all of us would agree that, you know, listening to their concern or listening to their issue is is of vital importance. You know, depending on what it is, you know, I always feel like, you know, issues are best addressed at the most immediate level. So just as Bryce mentioned, you know, if it's an issue that a parent's having with a teacher that, you know, they they work that out together. You know, us stepping in is not going to do anything to build trust or relationship within that, within the building or within the community. The other thing is, you know, as a board member, I have to be careful that I am not promising something that I as an individual board member am not able to deliver on. We govern collectively. And so have to be very careful about making those, making a promise that we're going to do something that we may not have the authority to do. Obviously, depending on what the feedback is, is is passing that feedback on to the superintendent just so she's aware or he's aware of situations that could come to their attention. Or it may be putting that person in contact with our superintendent to to work out or or present whatever it is that they're wanting to present. So, you know, and then finally, the board, as like I said, the board as a whole, you know, can can take a look at it, but I do have to be careful that I'm not overstepping my bounds.
Okay, thank you very much. This is our next question. House Bill 543 would allow a non-resident student to transfer to another public school district. If passed, what effect would this bill have on the center school district? And we'll start with Bryce.
So I believe that is the vouchers program bill. I'd be like to be stake on the exact number of the bill. So the issue with that is that if students are permitted to to leave and takes tax dollars with them, is that what that really ultimately does is it siphons money out of the district, which affects all of our students. And that that is an issue. And being a center, being an urban district, we are very close, since being urban, we're very close to a lot of suburban districts, private schools, lots of social risks. And when you remove those tax dollars, you aren't just affecting your kid, you're affecting every kid that's in that district. You know, as I say, I I'm not currently a parent. But, you know, my tax dollars go to support all the children of the district, and I pay those happily and readily because I want to support all of the kids. And so when you're removing your child, which you have the right to do, absolutely, if you want to send your kid to to private school, that's that's great, but your tax dollars are not going to pay for your kids specifically. Your tax dollars are going to support all of the children of the community and support your community. And so if I, again, if I take it the wrong bill, my apologies, I think this is what I'm hitting on the right train on, is again, I'm concerned about it because I think it's going to remove money from our district, which is going to hurt all the children of our community, which is what nobody in center wants. So, thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca?
Yeah, so there are a lot of voucher programs that are floating out there, house bills that are floating out there. And yeah, I I'm with Bryce on that one, you know. All it does is siphon money away from our district. And for a district our size, which, you know, if we lose even 10%, you know, that impacts the students that stay stay with us. And and while I have three in the district and they will be moving on in a couple of years, again, I will happily pay my taxes to support the children that are in our district. So, you know, it is something that these types of bills come around quite often. And honestly, I would love it to, if, you know, the board and administration and teachers in the community could come together and and really collectively fight these things because they're going to keep coming. The other thing is, is just making sure that center stays so competitive that, you know, people aren't wanting to take their kids out of our our district. So.
Thank you. Julie?
Yeah, so I think, you know, the the House Bill 543 or Committee Substitute 543 is the open enrollment bill. And I know that when I read the provisions of that, and I don't know what happened on it today, I know they were supposed to move on with it today a little bit, but when I read all the provisions, it it kind of makes my head spin. But so I want to say, I I remember when we had an issue of transferring out of districts. And it really, in this part of the state, the only district affected by that on the transfer out end was Kansas City. And I don't know if people remember that, but the district that Kansas City had designated was, I believe, Blue Springs and but the kids that wanted to leave Kansas City, the majority of them wanted to come to center. And, you know, that that was sort of the reason I suppose I remember that is because it was a source of pride, you know, we were a place that people wanted to come. And I think we can get to that point, you know, again, and I think that's what, you know, the final thing that Rebecca touched on is that, you know, if we're doing a good job, if we are serving the community and listening to our community, and that is absolutely what we should be doing. You know, I don't, I I don't support this law. I've been against those kinds of things for decades, but, you know, we can also avoid it by being really, really good.
Thank you. Katie?
I get updates on legislation regularly, several times a week. And so since I was given the advantage of being called on last, I went and I looked at that update and it's the bill was perfected, so they're actually putting it up for a final vote on the 25th. So, everybody, make a phone call. Yes, so a lot of what's been said, of course, is absolutely correct. It does siphon money away from public school districts. And the resources, of course, are lessened for everyone. Now, and this probably comes more from a teacher's perspective, there's another secondary consequence of it. And that is, the families that go ahead and make these requests and go through the hoops to be transferred generally have a more educationally rich background. And so when those students are now taken out of the classroom, you're left with really an educational poverty in the classroom. Your diversity is is reduced. And I find that having a variety of ability levels in a classroom really steps the game up for everybody. So that educational poverty that it creates is a real concern, and which is why I I do not support tax vouchers. The school choice laws, they're all one and the same, they're accomplishing the same thing. Please contact your representatives.
Thank you. We have another question about a House bill. This one is 322, which would allow for the opening of a recovery charter high school in Kansas City. What is your position on a charter school for teens recovering from addiction? And we're going to go to Katie.
This is a very interesting idea. I always hesitate with charters because I worry about the accountability piece. Now, public schools are governed by local school boards. Charter schools don't necessarily have that accountability. And accountability is very important. A large percentage of charter schools are not successful and close their doors. And a lot of times, they are for profit, not necessarily, I don't know if the motivation is always in the right place. It's a really interesting idea, though, to have a a school specifically for students that are recovering. At the same time, though, I'm also proponent for variety in the classroom. And if you open a school that's targeting one particular type of student, you're not going to have as much variety. I don't think it would be as educationally rich. I'd say the accountability piece concerns me the most. So would I be in favor of a charter school specifically for students with that are recovering? Unless I were to see specifically the accountability procedures, I could not support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
You know, I I share many of concerns that Katie has, although I definitely can understand the appeal of the specialized needs of young people that are in that situation, no question, you know, and the recovery in those situations, very, very difficult. And, you know, the success rate is often, you know, it takes several rounds of effort to really break the, you know, the negative cycles. So while I definitely share concerns about the needs, I feel like we should probably be able to find a better way to address those needs, you know, other than taking away the local democratic control, which does open up to, if you have services being provided that are less than what they should be, less than what the public really needs and deserves, how do you address that? You know, that and that's the accountability piece that is so, so lacking. Anytime you take away the the local control. So so, you know, again, trying to come up with these small ideas, you know, small niches for, oh, well, we can have a charter for this. I'm pretty skeptical of that.
Thank you. And Bryce?
It's going to be a little bit of an echo chamber in here this evening. I think in the issue with charter schools, I think all of our candidates are relatively agreement is that the accountability issues with them present problems and not being governed by a local school board. The concept itself, it's intriguing, only that I'm trying to imagine how it would work. Like, would it be like a dormitory program, like a boarding school? Like, I don't, I'm just trying to imagine. But I can't think is there's probably a way to do something similar within the existing school districts of Kansas City, create programs, partnering with our other school districts to help create a similar program while maintaining the accountability of our boards, which I think is incredibly valuable as a as a community to have the voter base holding the board accountable for the work in their districts. So I think a potentially alternative option would be that our districts of Kansas City, if they want to see this an issue, be working together, possibly on a joint program, that we can work towards solving this without the the need of an additional charter school in the community.
Thank you. Well, we're coming up on time for each of you to give us your two-minute closing statements. But before we do that, I want to take this opportunity to thank all of the people who've joined us this evening, both here on Zoom and on Facebook. I want to thank the people who submitted questions. I'm sorry we didn't get a chance to get to all of them. I hope that all of you will take the time to share the insights that you've gained tonight with your family and friends. And most importantly, I hope that you will all go and vote on April 6. And now it's time for our candidates' closing remarks. And they have two minutes for their closing remarks. And we'll start in reverse order with Julie.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to the League for holding this this forum for us. You know, each time, I think this is a really good thing. And I think, you know, Zoom is not my favorite, but I think we do reach a wider audience that way. So, you know, so I'm glad to be part of that. I would say, you know, although I am no longer a parent or a teacher in the district, I just really loved Center. You know, I liked my other jobs, too. I've always liked all of my jobs that that I've had, including the years I spent at the state. Center was really special. And I don't know if people can really even imagine, you know, how hard we worked. But how happy we all were to do it. We were doing some unique high-quality work, you know. Everyone said that we were the highest functioning urban school district in the state. I believe that we were certainly very high functioning and everything we did reflected that. And so I guess for me, this is an extension of that, you know, I'm not in the classroom anymore there, but you know, this is a different way of serving, also, you know, sort of unpaid here. You know, and I think that for me, this is a really natural extension to that. I've said, you know, I believe that teachers at Center want to make sure they are serving all of their students well. That is one reason I strongly support Dr. Carvile's efforts to bring the racial equity training into the district. I know I have participated in many of those things and found them very useful, and I am shocked that I'm running out of time. Has any questions, welcome to contact me. Thank you so much.
Bryce?
You know, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and South Kansas City Alliance for hosting this forum tonight. You know, when my wife and I moved to the district, we were so excited to move here because of Center and the stories that my family had told about Center and how great it is. We were very excited to move into a community that supports their their district so well. You know, I was raised on two principles, first one being public service and the second one being education, the importance of it. Through my work at KCHTA and the Community Government Affairs Department, I've spent lots of time working in our communities and and listening to people and understanding their needs. And again, it's a reiterated thing in South Kansas City is the importance of our schools, what people talk about. And, you know, I'm really excited about that. You know, I I believe I bring a unique perspective to the board, the board that isn't currently it isn't currently on the board. And that's what I want to provide for the community. You know, I believe it starts with our kids. And as I always say, a strong community start with strong schools. And I want to make sure Center is the best district in Kansas City. So I thank you for considering me on April 6. If you liked me, I promise you I will be available and I will be working for you every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca?
All right. Yes, thank you, League of Women Voters, for for hosting tonight. You know, as I mentioned, I am the incumbent that's running. And during the last three years, we have undergone quite a few changes. You know, we passed a $48 million bond to improve our facilities and hired a new superintendent and now have had to navigate educating and supporting our our students during COVID. And, you know, under normal circumstances, you know, there can be a pretty steep learning curve when you come on the board, not just in terms of how things work, but, you know, as as perspective has to shift as you're looking at at the board as a whole. So I do bring that experience with me. You know, the last year has been a challenge, to say the least, and I am so grateful for our our teachers and our staff and our community and just, you know, how they've rallied. You know, it has highlighted just how important our schools are and just how much Center is the heart of our community. It has also highlighted where there's more work to be done to fully support our our students and ensure they receive a high-quality education and feel valued and and graduate ready for the world beyond Center. And and so they're the reason I want to run for a second term on the board. So I am asking you to vote, vote for me on April 6, and feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions about anything from tonight.
Thank you, Katie.
Again, thank you. This has been a wonderful forum. Wow. I really love Center School District. I'm proud of the work that I've done with Center as a teacher. I was also a teacher leader and very active in the union. And through that, I was part of the collective bargaining team. So I had the opportunity to work with members of Central Office. So I got to see a different perspective through that. I was also elected by my peers to represent Center on a national level in Washington DC, creating policy there. So I have quite a bit of experience from multiple backgrounds. And then there's the public safety aspect as well. Our board in the last 10 years has probably lacked educational expertise or experience in education. And I think that really has affected how policy is made, because it's really hard to see how policy affects students if you haven't been in the classroom. Because that's where you see it in action. So I think it's very important to have good representation on the board at all levels of education, elementary, middle school, and high school. Our job is to serve all students, not 20%. All students. And we need to make sure that we have board members that have that in the forefront of their minds. Please consider me on April 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy, do you want to make some closing remarks?
Yes, thank you very much. Well, it's clear to me that the Center School District is very fortunate to have candidates who are so passionate, articulate, and committed. I'm very impressed. Thanks to each of you for making yourselves available to the voters for this important election. On behalf of the League of Women Voters and the South Kansas City Alliance, thanks so much for joining us. Before the election, take a look at your ballot, which you can find on the League's homepage, lwbkc.org, by clicking on Vote 411. And please, vote on April 6. Thanks very much, everyone.